Good afternoon and welcome to everyone. Space Mountain. Glad you're all here. This is the first meeting of the new season of the Rancho Mirage City Council. It's Thursday, September 6th. The council also serves the library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment's accessory agency. If you would now please stand for the pledge to our flag led by our Director of Marketing, Shawn Smith.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shawn. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Councilmember Wile.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich. And Mayor Kite.
Here. Thank you. Today, we have some special individuals who recently joined the staff here at Rancho Mirage. I'd like to have Shawn introduce two of the new employees that are in his department. Shawn?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce two very welcome additions to our team. After a very competitive selection process, Jessica Enos and Jessica Stevens were chosen to fill our two analyst positions. Jessica Enos, if you would stand, please. Comes to us from the Betty Ford Center where she was a care navigator coordinator and assisted in creating various guidelines, processes, and communication platforms across departments. Jessica comes with a bachelor's degree in psychology, so she's available for counseling as well. Jessica Stevens, or Jess, as you might imagine, having two Jessicas on at the same time posed a little bit of a problem, so she jumped in and said, "Refer to me as Jess." So we gladly did. She was most recently an administrative manager with the Agua Canli India Band of Quea Indians where she worked on a number of and variety of projects. And she has a bachelor's degree in business administration and recently obtained her master's degree in public administration from USC. That's a fantastic program. I can already tell you that Jess and Jessica are a great addition to this team. They have hit the ground running in the three weeks that they've been here. We have a large number of things we're working on, some significant projects and programs underway and about to be underway. And I have nothing but glad, happy, and wonderful things to say about both of them. I'd like to welcome them to the Rancho Mirage family. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawn. So does the next person that you interview have to be named Jessica?
That would get her a step ahead, probably.
Okay, next on the agenda here, I'd like to have Isaiah Hegerman, our City Manager, introduce our new addition to the finance department.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to introduce Kofi Antabom. Kofi is our new Director of Administrative Services. So in that role, he will oversee our finance department, HR, IT, and our admin staff. And he's the lucky one that gets to fill the position that I vacated. So I know that's always a tough position to walk into. During the interview process, the panel was myself, all the directors, and our city clerk. And Kofi came in and just demonstrated his skill set and ability, and he really wowed the interview panel. Kofi's going to be a great addition to our Rancho Mirage family here. He has a wealth of knowledge. He came from the town of Apple Valley where he served as the Director of Finance and the Town Treasurer. Prior to that, Kofi worked for a CPA firm. And Kofi has his master's in business administration. He's got his CPA license, so he is a certified public accountant. He's got his CFE license, which is a certified fraud examiner. And he has his CIA license, which is a certified internal auditor. So really, across the board, he came in and just did a great job through the interview process, and we are very lucky to have somebody like Kofi join our team. So Kofi, welcome. And we do have one new addition to our library staff, our program coordinator, T.J. Hicks. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today, so we will bring him at the next council meeting.
Great. Got some really great people coming up through the staff, and should be a great year. Well, we have three presentations today. The first being Captain John Shields, Riverside County Sheriff's Department. John, congratulations for your great work in the city and the recent promotion. Would you please come down and stand at the podium? It's great to see you today.
Thank you.
For the last five years, Captain Shields served as the Assistant Police Chief for the City of Rancho Mirage at the rank of Lieutenant. During that time, Captain Shields assisted the city on many public safety issues and special events. Captain Shields kept our community safe and represented himself, the Sheriff's Department, and the City of Rancho Mirage with the utmost level of professionalism. Captain Shields is now the commander of the New Indio Jail. The new jail is a state-of-the-art 300,000, or 300 million, 300 million, you can't get the beds for 300,000, I suspect, 300 million that will increase the jail capacity in the county by 1,600, or about 40%. John has been a welcome fixture to our community. He will certainly be missed, but we are all very happy for him. Wish him the best of luck in your new position. So at this time, I have a couple of comments from members of the City Council, John, and if you could, after them, then you can make a few comments. So, Council, if you have a comment? Ted?
Yes. Captain, and I'm delighted to use the title Captain. It's been a privilege and an honor to have you part of the family. I know that over the course of the years, I've gotten to know you and had the pleasure of meeting Sherry on a number of occasions. One of the joys for me was spending time with you when we gave gifts to the kids with the shop with the cups, which has become an annual event. And it's just, it's fun and rewarding. Matter of fact, there's, I guess, a few pictures of one of the memorable mornings that we spent together. It's so gratifying. And you've always been there. You've given your time, and you're a picture of community service. And it's recognized, it's recognized by everyone here, and we just couldn't be more pleased for you. We're sad that we may not see as much of you as previously, but we're thrilled for your promotion, and we wish you the best. Thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
Iris, do you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. It's good seeing you. It's, I think we all view you here today with mixed emotions, because as happy as we are for your promotion, we're all obviously going to miss you a great deal. Words cannot really adequately describe how much you mean to us, and all the accolades in the world wouldn't cover it adequately. But you've always been a very dedicated and a kind person. You're a very smart person. You're very analytical. You're a loving father and a loving husband. And you're very caring about your community, and you've always been very involved. And you almost sound like a Boy Scout. So it's all those accolades that we can pay to you, and they're all well-deserving. So we're honored that we have been able to call you a friend for all these years, and we look forward to calling you a friend for many more years. And congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Dana?
Captain Shields. The thing that I'll remember most about your presence over these years has been that when we had problems or urgent issues that needed attention.
Sometimes, sometimes a rash of burglaries, whatever the issue was, when we brought it to your attention, you didn't just say, "I'm going to be right on it, and I'll get to it as quickly as I can." You got on to those issues immediately. And by doing that, you have benefited our city immeasurably and made the council look well in the process, and we deeply appreciate that. And since I'm the only lawyer, I'm probably the only one who may be ending up in jail for some dumb reason. If I do, remember, I said some nice words about you. Just kidding, of course. We're going to miss you tremendously. Good luck in the new position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Charlie?
I will miss that smile and that humor, and I hope never to see you in your new position, but thank you for all the services. You will really be missed, John, mostly by all of us, too. Thank you. Best to you.
Thank you.
John, it's your turn.
Wow. Thank you very much. I am honored and touched, and I have to put my glasses on because I'm old and I can't see up close anymore. You know, working for the City of Rancho Mirage has been an amazing time. Obviously, it's going to be one of the highlights of my career. And I remember the very first staff meeting I came to, and Randy Binder, the City Manager then, he had instructed the staff to introduce themselves to me without giving me their titles, what they did for a living. And he said the test was, after the staff meeting, I was to determine what everybody did for the city. And it went downhill from there. It's been amazing. It's been amazing working with City Manager Isaiah and the City Council and city staff. It truly is a great city, and the city has been blessed to have such an amazing city council and staff, because they truly care for the city and its citizens. And I have really fond memories of events that I've been invited to, like the Writers' Festival, the Concerts in the Park, Art Affair, the Food &amp; Wine Festival, the opening of the Observatory, the opening of, or the Christmas tree lighting at the Ritz-Carlton, and many other events. It's just been a great time, and I've enjoyed it immensely. And how can I forget the Christmas parties and Isaiah and his roll of tickets? But in closing, I really want to thank the City Council and city staff for making me feel part of the Rancho Mirage family. I have been blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now, if we could have the City Council down at the podium, we have a gift for John. John, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we've put together a gift for you, which is really rather unique and probably one of a kind around here, and hope you'll enjoy it. And, see, Dana, would you take the cover off?
Ta-da. Ooh, pretty. Oh, very nice.
John, can you describe what's in the corners there?
This is the city patch for the City of Rancho Mirage Police Department, and this is the patch for the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and of course, Lieutenant Barr's, and then a plaque, most importantly, it looks like the city, the key of the city for Rancho Mirage, which is quite impressive.
Key to the desert forever.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where's the photographer? There's photographer, okay. We're going to do a picture. Okay, thank you. And we're going to have additional.
If we have quite a few Sheriff's Department employees in the back, if you guys wouldn't mind coming up, and we'll take a big group photo.
That's nice. Very nice.
And you're seeing the faces of the men and women that protect you on a daily basis. Squeeze in. Captain, if I could get you to stay there for just one moment. City staff, let's go take a picture with Captain Shields. So Captain, on behalf of the city staff, we just want to thank you for how great you were to work with, your responsiveness to our community, and you really were part of our team and part of our family, and that'll never change, even though you're moving on. We're all very happy for you. You absolutely deserve that promotion, and we're all thrilled for you, even though that meant that we lose you. But thank you for everything you did. For me personally, we spent a lot of time together, and, you know, you're the perfect example of what a public safety officer is. You love this community. It didn't matter what time it was, you were there, you, whatever was going on, whatever the circumstance was, you were on top of it, you were proactive, and our community is much better off because of you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, is everybody back here? We'll continue the meeting, and now I'd like to call up to the podium Barbara Ben-David. Barbara is the Director of Development and Communications for Fine Food Bank. And we prepared a special proclamation for Fine today in honor of September being Hunger Action Month. It's great to have you here today for this contribution. Hunger and food insecurity are the issues of grave concern in the United States and Riverside County. Fine currently distributes food to an average of 85,000 people per every, every month, and it amounts to over 10 million pounds of food distributed annually. Quite a job. On behalf of the entire City Council, I want to proclaim the month of September 2018 in Rancho Mirage as Hunger Action Month, and commend Fine Food Bank for its outstanding 35 years of service and commitment to the health and wellness of the Coachella Valley residents. So I'm going to come down and present the proclamation to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here today, and we do have a proclamation here. Which is honoring Hunger and Action Month, the 35th anniversary of Fine Food Bank, signed by myself on behalf of the City Council and the staff. I want to thank you for being here, and more importantly, thank you for everything you do for the valley. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the next presentation. Good friend of mine and a good friend of the valley, Aurora Wilson, is here today representing Jocelyn Center Board. Aurora, would you like to come up here? We've also prepared a proclamation to proclaim September as National Senior Center Month. Jocelyn Center acts as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Rancho Mirage, that's older residents, through a wide variety of services, programs, and activities. On behalf of the entire City Council, I want to proclaim the month of September 2018 in Rancho Mirage as National Senior Center Month, and call upon all of its citizens to recognize the special contributions of the senior center. So Aurora, I'm going to come down and give you a presentation, the proclamation, and we can talk a little bit more about the Jocelyn Center when I'm down there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Seems like we've been here before for these awards, and
I love every time.
And it's great having you here. You want to tell a little bit about the Jocelyn Center and your involvement and what, how Rancho Mirage residents are involved?
Thank you. Thank you so much. I do have just a few remarks I'd like to make. Mayor Kite, City Council members, City Manager and staff, on behalf of the Board of Directors for the Jocelyn Center, we want to thank you so much for this wonderful presentation today. We truly appreciate the acknowledgement of the city from our Cove Community Partner, the City of Rancho Mirage, for recognizing the work of the Jocelyn Center. You know, we continue efforts to outreach to the residents in Rancho Mirage and also, as well as the Coachella Valley, and we truly welcome their visits to the Jocelyn Center. I'd also like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank your Mayor Protem Iris Smotrich for her continued advocacy of the center. It means so much to the center to know that you are all out there, but she in particular is community advocates for us in attending our meetings. As you know, the Jocelyn Center Annual Luncheon is coming up in April 2019, and we are busy planning that. And with that, the Jocelyn Board is pleased to announce the recipients of the Merritt and Penny Jocelyn Award. And yes, there are three recipients this year, three women, three champions, and they are members of the Cove Community Association. Mayor Kimberly Music from the City of Indian Wells, Mayor Protem Kathleen Kelly from Palm Desert, and Mayor Protem Iris Smotrich from the City of Rancho Mirage. Congratulations, and we look forward to participation of the city in this event. And thank you again for acknowledging the center during this special month.
So the proclamation is honoring National Senior Center Month, and it's signed by myself, and certainly all of the council and the staff support your cause here and everything you do to make the Jocelyn Center even better. So you put this with all the other proclamations you have at Jocelyn, and thanks for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody who didn't get a plaque while we were here? It's good to see the participation of our residents and the hard work that everybody puts in to make the City of Rancho Mirage and the valley even better. So now we'll move on to non-agenda public comments, and these are comments from the public on items that are not included in the agenda, and we would hope that you would limit your comments to three minutes. And if you haven't filled out a yellow form yet, you can fill these out, give them to the city clerk, and then we'll call your name, and you can come up and say your piece. So the first individual we have today is Deana Silverman. Deana?
Mr. Mayor, a member of the City Council, thank you for allowing the public to speak. I'm presenting my agenda today because I will be out of town when this is on your next agenda on the 20th of September. My name is Deana Silverman, and I'm a resident of Mission Hills Country Club. I'm here to speak about the proposed 60-foot 5G cell tower to be built on the Western property. AT&amp;T and Western are proposing to locate the tower at the fringe of the Western's Dyna Shore Resort, removed from the focus of the Western Resort but directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood. The proposed site places the tower only 133 feet from Rancho Mirage homes, with over 350 homes within just 1,500 feet of the tower. With most current cellular sites on municipal land or industrial sites, this tower would be one of only two out of 24 towers in Rancho Mirage to intrude directly on a residential neighborhood. The tower will be one of the first 5G towers in Rancho Mirage. 5G cellular transmissions is the newest, most powerful development within cellular communications. Being new, little is known about living in close proximity to 5G towers. Many scientists have openly questioned the safety of 5G transmission sites, citing the extreme differences between 5G radio waves and those of traditional cellular towers. None of the residents of these communities are against technology and better cellphone service. They simply want new towers to be placed in locations which do not have the potential to create serious health issues for themselves and their children. There is a relatively simple and painless solution. Move the proposed tower to a location that is not directly adjacent to Rancho Mirage homes. We call upon the Rancho Mirage City Council, who must ratify the Planning Commission's approval, to send the application back with the recommendation that a new site on the Western property be selected. To prevent such issues in the future, I'm almost done, Rancho Mirage residents are also urging the City Council to adopt a new municipal ordinance which would prohibit any cellular installation being installed nearer than 1,500 feet from residences or from residentially zoned properties. Adoption of such an ordinance would create a controlled environment in which Rancho Mirage could safely embrace the future of cellular technology in a controlled and resident-respectful manner. Yes, there are experts, including the FCC, in 1998, who state that the EMFs from cell towers are safe. Does such an assertion by government officials sound discomfortingly familiar? There are just as many experts who are equally convinced that cell tower emissions do create significant health risks. The residents of Rancho Mirage shouldn't be subjected, along with their kids and grandkids, to participate in an experiment testing the safety of this new high-power technology. We respectfully ask and call on We respectfully ask and call on the Rancho Mirage City Council to relocate the proposed AT&amp;T 5G tower. We hope we can count on you to support allocation of the proposed AT&amp;T cell tower. A win-win-win solution: find a new location for the cell tower. AT&amp;T wins, Rancho Mirage residents win, and finally, the Rancho Mirage City Council wins. The most non-contemptious solution can easily be achieved. Playing it safe costs nothing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carol Kretschman. Is that Kretschman?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay. Thank you so much, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I've really—I've been here as a resident full-time for 14 years, but I go way back to actually the building of the Springs Country Club, where as an architect, I was the head of building the sales office. So, you know, I was about three years old at the time. And I've lived here since 2004, but prior to that, I also ran the ice skating rink that was at the Ernie Hahn Center under the name of the Icecapades. So I've been continuing doing business here in Rancho Mirage. And why I'm here today is because I'm very excited about the company I started here in Rancho Mirage in 2009 called Logos E. We are a technology think tank. I think that I'm the bookends of what you just heard. We're very much involved in mobile. That's our whole focus. We developed—for my charity, an app and a new way of reaching the youth around the world with the Film Festival. The app, called PSGFF, is on all your phones for free, and was able to reach kids all over the world because we do not use 5G, but we created a patented product that uses low-band or machine language. And we're developing it here in Rancho Mirage, and I am working across the globe now. Our headquarters are here, but we're partnering with companies that are in Europe, and Africa, South America, and Mexico, and of course, the United States. Being able to deliver safe, secure information on your phone directly from the cloud, bypassing broadband, not worried about net neutrality. And why I'm here is I'm very pleased that we are using Rancho Mirage, my hometown, which I love dearly and would never leave anywhere else, even though I grew up in Beverly Hills. I love it here. But that we're creating a center for technology here. I will be hiring young people, especially in coding. I've been working with UCR about developing a coding school at UCR for young high school students so that when they graduate, they have a skill. And I need them because every time we sell a client, whether it's Target or Walmart or the United States government, they want that app to look like their logo, so there's coding to do. So that's why I'm here. I'm very excited to build this company here in Rancho Mirage, and maybe with our power and our influence in the technology world, we can create Silicon Springs right here in Rancho Mirage. We have Silicon Valley, we have Silicon Beach, why not Silicon Springs? So thank you very much, and thank you for all the work you do and how you run this wonderful city. I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker was Wally Melendez. Wally, your address, please.
My address is Coachella Valley. And, well, actually, since you brought that up, I'm the ambassador-at-large between Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert, and the College of the Desert. And yes, my name is Wally Melendez, and I'm happy and proud to be here. I've been in this area for about two years now, and like I said, I'm happy and proud to be here. I like—I like what you've been doing, the pictures on the side, that window over there, and I especially liked the big— the big screen of the—of showing everybody, even the—even the audience out here, which especially looks nice. I—I really like that because I can actually see myself, and I can see that I'm getting bald. And I used to have, you know, real beautiful black hair and so on. However, I'm here to talk to you for only about three minutes, and I love it. I—I love to talk to you and I love for you to listen to me. And I just want to point out a few things. I love Rancho Mirage, I love Palm Desert. This is where I hang out. I love it. And, no, I'm not homeless, but what I want to say is that Rancho Mirage has a beautiful library and also a brand-new observatory. And you wouldn't believe it, but the way I see it, Rancho Mirage and Palm Desert are like so close together, they're almost like the same town. And Palm Desert, number one, College of the Desert needs to be a four-year college. We are turning out vocational people, you know, well-described, but we need—we need lawyers. Where's my light thing here? We need lawyers, doctors, or that—that start out here at this—in this place that I just mentioned, Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert, as doctors, lawyers, dentists. Whereas we get doctors, lawyers, dentists from all over the world, but none that—that start out to be trained here. So that's why—the College of the Desert needs to be a four-year college. How much time do I have left? So—
You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds. And I also want to mention something very important. I am—again, I'm going to say it—I'm so happy and proud to be here. I'm happy and proud to see responsible people heading a government, a small town in Coachella Valley. Just think of the idiots, the irresponsible idiots in Venezuela, in Nicaragua, in Cuba, and Bolivia. What a bunch of morons, shooting people on the street.
The next speaker is Mason Grigsby.
Hi. I wasn't going to talk, but Deana kind of inspired me. I'm on an ad hoc committee with Deana relative to the cell tower, and I just want to make a kind of—been here two years. I came from San Francisco after 55 years and spent—
Please send your address.
103 Lakefront in Mission Hills.
Thank you.
I probably spent as much time going in front of boards as you have being on a board in San Francisco. We, 10 years ago, tried to save recreation facilities, and I spent hundreds of hours—Gavin Newsom was our mayor—and I want to compliment you, Mayor. He never did show up at one of the board meetings, so nice to see you here. And also, in fact, the second thing I got to comment on is I'm an ex-IBM guy that always wore ties. It's nice to see someone still wears ties in the world, and I'm sorry I didn't this time. Next time, I will. But the point of this whole discussion, and that Deana made it quickly, and we've done a lot of research on it, I think you'll find, one of the things—I know from my experience in San Francisco, boards try and do the right thing by the citizens. And I haven't been here long enough to rate any of you, but I suspect that's why you're here. And all I want to say is, Deana made a point at the end. Moving a cell tower, which can't be that difficult and can easily be achieved, is a win-win for everybody involved. Nobody can possibly be upset by moving it. Council wins, we win in Rancho Mirage and the surrounding area, and certainly, the board wins because you don't have to put up with contentious citizens yelling at you. You made the wrong decision. So thanks very much for listening.
Thank you, Mason. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? That is not already? All right, well, thank you very much for being here, and we'll now move on to council comments. Yes, Steve.
So we do have a hearing scheduled for the 20th, I believe, and that's going to be conducted as an official public hearing. So if you want your comments to be considered officially and submitted to the record, I'd recommend that you put your comments in writing, submit them to either the city clerk or to the planning department.
Isaiah. Do you have a comment? Oh, okay. All right, thanks, Steve. Well, now move on to City Council comments, and begin with Ted. Do you have a comment for today?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have noticed quite a bit of progress being made on what will be a significant addition to Rancho Mirage. Several months ago, the city and the ownership group of Ferrari Showrooms in both Orange and San Diego Counties entered into a development agreement to reuse the former electric car distributor and Ramona Tire properties. These two commercial properties along Highway 111 were previously vacant and in perfect condition for reuse. The above slide depicts each of the properties when the Ferrari group took ownership. The high-profile locations of these properties make this a very important project for our community. As you can see, quite a bit of progress has been made. In fact, the transformation has been impressive. The owners have combined the parcels, painted the buildings, installed new signage, and are in the process of installing new landscaping. While the redevelopment of these sites looks great, the ultimate plan is to build a new state-of-the-art Ferrari showroom in the near future. If you were in the market for a new Ferrari, your wait is over. I hear a lot of sighs of relief out there. I know you've just been waiting. We expect the new Rancho Mirage showroom to be open this fall, again, what is a very welcome addition to our community. And what this depicts, frankly, is consistent with the brand of the 922-70 ZIP code. There is that style and cliche cachet that goes with Rancho Mirage. It's the very reason that Ferrari has chosen this location. It's one of the very reasons that frankly, Dell Webb developed their project in Rancho Mirage because it was conditioned upon it being annexed to the city. The 922-70 ZIP code has a lot of value. It represents a brand that we're very proud of, and I think as you see this property develop over the course of the next 60 days, it will be sparkling and consistent with the other high-end dealerships in close proximity. So again, we thank you. Thank you for our Economic Development Department for bringing this along, and nothing but good things will happen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Iris?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, July 20th, the Agua Caliente Band of Quelea Indians presented the city of Rancho Mirage with two very generous donations: an emergency generator for Rancho Mirage Fire Station 69, and a new BMW motorcycle for the Rancho Mirage Sheriff's Department. As you can see on the slide above, this is the generator being placed into position, and the gentleman controlling its destiny. The next slide shows that it is in its final position, and this is something very important to us. It's a very important addition to the fire department because in the event of a power outage, this generator will automatically turn on and power the entire facility in less than one minute. Thank you for the slides. This is an essential order to respond to an emergency during a power outage. The $27,000 generator replaced an old generator that could only operate a portion of the station, so we are absolutely thrilled that it is in place. The slide number three, this is our new $33,000 motorcycle. It was needed by the Sheriff's Department as a replacement for an eight-year-old model, and we are thrilled to have it in place. And as we all know, motorcycles are an important part of the Sheriff's Department's efforts as they offer several advantages over four-wheeled vehicles. They can easily maneuver through traffic and go places other vehicles cannot go. And as you might have guessed, we all had an opportunity to sit on this no-motorcycle, but clearly Dana had the most fun.
You look pretty intense.
I did not exceed 70 miles an hour.
And we all had a fun day watching Dana, and it was a pleasure that we could all do it, and we have a lot of memorable photos to show our experience. Members of the City Council were present, along with Vice Chairman Larry Olinger of the Tribal Council, and members of both our Police and Fire Department were also there for the dedication. So this is the group photo. It was a great event, needless to say, and it symbolized both the tribe's commitment to support local public safety efforts and programs, and the city and tribe's longstanding relationship. So a heartfelt thank you to the Agua Caliente Band of Quelea Indians for their generous donation and continued support of public safety and our community, and a huge thank you to our fire department as well as our law enforcement. So thank you all.
Thank you, Iris. Dana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment to alert Rancho Mirage residents to a coming hazardous situation which we're going to be working on for a considerable period of time, I fear. City of Cathedral City has decided that it would like to have a on-ramp and off-ramp at the-to-be intersection of Deval Drive and Interstate 10 Freeway. Now picture that in your mind so you know what I'm talking about. Deval Drive, which goes by the cemetery, going north, it passes Tuscany and Mira Vista, two residential communities in Rancho Mirage, and on the left, it passes the cemetery, it passes a park and playground for children on the—again, now that side of the street is Cathedral City. And above the playground is nothing but residential communities until development ends. The development ends approximately a third of a mile south of the freeway. So what they want to do is build a freeway, finish the freeway to connect with Interstate 10 through Deval. The consequences of that, they say, will benefit them because it will allow them to develop their northern sphere of influence, land that they have that they haven't begun to develop yet. And if you think in terms—close your eyes, think of Highway, the Interstate 10, think of the Interstate 10, and then beyond that to the mountains, there is a considerable amount of land that is within the sphere of influence of Cathedral City. They think that by having an interchange at Deval, which is one mile from Date Palm, where they already have an interchange, they think that that will help them develop the north side of their—of the freeway in their city. And we've told them that we would support an on- and off-ramp on the north side, you just don't need that on the south side, you don't need that traffic going into these residential communities on very narrow streets. communities on very narrow streets. But we've not had any cooperation from them, and they're moving forward. And from C-VAG, you know, they're the folks that gave us the, our bicycle travails for so long. They have passed at C-VAG, they've passed the motion supporting Cathedral City's efforts to get an I-10 interchange from Caltrans. Caltrans is now considering that issue. So my point is that that is absolutely one of the worst possible locations, most dangerous locations, to adults, children, and animals that one could think of. And my hope is that we will be opposing that project vigorously, and I wanted to take this moment in time just to introduce you to the issue. There'll be more coming in the future, but it's a problem that we have to come up with some good solutions to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say it's happy to be back to the 2018-29 season and to all the new things that'll be coming our way in that timeframe. Also, to be back here in our new updated state-of-the-art council chamber. As you can see, there have been many innovations which we are all very proud of. And we owe this all to the wonderful staff that we have here at this wonderful city hall who pulled this all together. Congratulations to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And it is nice to be back and with the cooler temperatures. I'm sure all of you have recognized the temperature plummeting over the last couple of weeks to get us into the fall season. And cooler temperatures ahead mean, of course, for us, more activities. And one of the real traditions in the fall, obviously, is football. Highly recommend, I highly recommend you take into the game at Rancho Mirage High School. Our Radlers are now off to a hot 3-0 start after defeating 29 Palms in the season opener, then Coachella Valley High School in a home opener, and following up that with a resounding win over Colton. This Friday, the Radlers take on Citrus Hill in Paris. But if you can't get out to the game at Paris, you can see the Radlers the week after that as they play against Roosevelt High School on September 14th. So, go Radlers! Fall is also a great time of the year to do hiking on our trails. The picture above is right of the Bighorn Overlook Trail that was right behind City Hall. We also have the Chuckawalla Loop, the Jack Rabbit Trail, the Road Runner Trail, Butler Abrams, and Clancy Lane Trails. The Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory continue to provide exceptional programming in pursuing of lifelong learning. Take in a movie, enjoy creative craft-making, or introduce yourself and your family to our new solar system with a tour of the observatory. The full schedule of programs and events can be found at www.rancho mirage public library or by calling 760-341-7323. And finally, the Children's Discovery Museum is a wonderful experience. The museum allows kids to explore the themes throughout their camps, toddler programs, creativity workshops, STEM nights, and special events. For more information, you can contact the Children's Discovery Museum of the Desert at www.cdmod.org. Of course, fall events, fall marks the beginning of the season and activities and other events. As we get closer to those dates in the future, we'll have more details on items such as the Rancho Mirage Art Affair, the Holiday Show, Music in the Park, the Rancho Mirage Wine and Food Festival, and many more. So keep track of what's coming out. There are a lot of activities planned between now and the end of the year. Okay, with the comments now over, we'll move on to the consent calendar and our city manager, Isaiah. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have three items on your consent calendar today. Item number one is the receive and file of the June 30th, 2018 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. Item number two is our contracts list, and there are two items on the contracts list for your consideration. The first contract is additional video cameras at our library campus. This would be additions to both the interior cameras in existence and also the addition of some exterior cameras. Contract number two is an amendment for the design firm of the Frank Sinatra Bridge. And there's just a quick clarification I wanted to make on page 2-2. So it lists the contract amount on this summary, and it's actually not the amount paid, it's the contract amount. So the $3,294,919.87, that's the contract amount if this amendment is approved by the council. The year-to-date amount spent going through a four-year environmental review process is about 1.7 million. The requests stem from three changes. There were some new requirements from CVWD that this project had to meet. So those two of the, two new requirements from CVWD, and then a really important one, which was a great catch by our Public Works Department. The Caltrans standard for a bridge is to only allow a sidewalk on one side of the bridge. So that's why when you cross many of the bridges in the Coachella Valley and really in California in general, there's usually a sidewalk only on one side of that bridge. With today and the emphasis on pedestrian safety, city staff identified this. The side of the bridge, the south side of the bridge, that was planned to not have the sidewalk, was directly connected to Wolfson Park. So it really didn't make sense from a staff level to build a bridge with pedestrian safety with the side of our park not having the sidewalk. So that would have required pedestrians to cross over Frank Sinatra to find the sidewalk. So city staff actually flew up to Sacramento, and we argued our case to break the Caltrans standard, and they agreed with our Public Works Director and his staff. So the part of the change is adding a six-foot sidewalk on the south side of the bridge, and that's actually going to extend all the way to the corner here of Highway 111 and Frank Sinatra to the car wash. So in front of Jensen's and the restaurants there in the Mobile Home Park, there's no sidewalk there now. The addition of the sidewalk will take it all the way to the corner of Highway 111. So we will have pedestrian connectivity from our park all the way to 111 on the south side of Frank Sinatra there. And this project, again, is being funded by a grant, a federal grant. So this change really results in about $8,000 worth of cost to the city. So out of the $265,000 being requested for the change order, grants are covering the majority of that cost. So we have a federal grant that covers 88.53% of the cost of the project. And then C-VAG, through the Regional Measure A Program, is covering the other 8.6%. And then the city, so local city funds are covering about 2.9% of this change.
Thank you.
And then item number three are demands, and staff is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff regarding the consent calendar? Any questions from the audience? I'm seeing none. Could I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve. Make a motion to have the city council receive and file the June 30th, 2018 Quarterly Treasurer's Report.
There's a motion, sir, a second, please.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're the minutes from the July 19th meeting. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 19th?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Isaiah.
Councilmember Townsend, your motion on the consent calendar includes items one, two, and three, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number four, which is the report on the Taste of Summer. And Mike Solangee?
Mayor, unfortunately, Mike couldn't be here due to a family emergency, so I will gladly conduct this presentation on his behalf.
Sean, thank you.
We just wrapped up a very successful Third Annual Taste of Summer campaign. The Taste of Summer is a joint venture between the city of Rancho Mirage, the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, and the Rancho Mirage Restaurant Association. The campaign ran from July 19th through August 19th. By purchasing a $10 wristband, participants were able to enjoy $4 appetizers, drinks, and desserts at participating Rancho Mirage eateries. Restaurants such as Bernie's Lounge, Catalon, House of Pocky, Medici, and many more offered great deals for guests to enjoy during the challenging summer season, which is why we do the campaign through July and August. Wristbands were sold here at City Hall, at the Chamber of Commerce, and through participating charities with over $28,000 raised. Proceeds from the sales at City Hall were distributed to Fine Food Bank, and proceeds from the Chamber of Commerce were distributed to Children's Discovery Museum. Proceeds from wristband sales through each of the participating charities were kept for those respective charities. I'd like to thank and acknowledge Jim Murdock, the store manager of Perch, for once again hosting a fantastic kickoff campaign party. It was a great all-around campaign that helped both Rancho Mirage restaurants and local charities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean. Any questions of Sean? Okay. This is just an information item, doesn't need any action. We'll also now move on to item number five, which is an update of the city council chamber. And this is being worked on by Jason and Jason Hadage. And Jason is actually the Senior Information Services Manager on this project. Jason, it's all yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council and staff. It's my pleasure to talk about our chamber upgrade on our AV equipment. Before we start any project, we like to form a business case, justification why we're doing it. So the main purpose of the reason we did this is because our AV equipment was starting to show its age, meaning it was a lot of analog going to digital conversion, so there was a lot of systems, a lot of inner workings, and we started having issues actually with our sound quality as well as our video quality. So we decided to do a whole system replacement. When I say system replacement, it's all the wiring, all the cables, all electronics, ripped and replaced, everything. So some of the highlights we're going to talk about are some of the upgrades we did. One was the AV room. We didn't even have an AV room. And the whole purpose we got an AV room was because we wanted everything at one location. And so we decided, where are we going to put this AV room at? On the corner, there was a closet. So if you guys look on my left-hand side, that was a closet. So here's a picture on your screen of what it looked like. So you opened that door, there was a bunch of chairs, and we go, huh, we could put an AV room here. So we decided to put our AV room here. This project wouldn't be feasible without the help of Public Works. Public Works actually helped us design it. They installed everything. We had Jesse out here, our Public Works Director, who was actually helping us out, working out. He put his hard hat on, his hard boots, his shoes, he had his hammer, and he was making sure everything worked. So without Public Works, this would not be a successful project. So as you see, you see some pictures of the framing, the walls being up, the floor. So right now, the AV room, if you take a look at it to my left out there, it looks like that room's already been in there. There's a lot of people in there right now. This is our first meeting, our first go-around, so there's a lot of things we need to still fix. So this is our first real test meeting, so there's a little bug still, like any project. The first time, we're working out the kinks. So what we did in the AV room, we brought the camera operator on one location. If you remember before, the camera operator sat on the other side of the room, and we had to use saying language sometimes to tell him, oh, point here, look at here. So now we have everyone in one room. So the person showing the PowerPoint's always all in one room, all of our server equipment, instead of being in the back, it's all right there. This right here, I really like, is our screens. So this is how our screens used to look before. This is a before shot. If you look at the right-hand corner, there's my head right there on the screen taking a picture of it. This is before, and this is how it is now. So you can see the clarity, before, now. So we upgraded our projectors and our screens. The screens are 198 inches. If you actually look at the screens, they look concave, but it's actually a flat screen. And the projectors are able to produce a resolution that's 4K, meaning it's crystal clear. So we have 4K video, high-quality video, we can produce that. The system that we got is able to, we're able to add more cameras, so we have room to grow. Another device we added, if any of our public or anybody has issues hearing, we added an assistant listening system that meets the ADA requirements. So if anybody has a, needs help hearing, just come to us in the AV room. Before the meeting starts, we give you one of these devices, and you'll be able to hear crystal clear. These are digital tuners, so you'll have a crystal-clear mic, like talking in your ear real close. Another option we upgraded is our camera systems. So we added a couple cameras around the room. They're HD quality, they're able to pan, tilt, and zoom up to 30X. That's a crystal, I mean, from all in a room, we can get real close, and we can have a great shot of you. Other things we're working on right now are the microphones. Each one of you guys in front of the diocese have new microphones. There's a longer goose-neck microphone. We could actually make it longer if you guys need to, they're swappable, and the quality is a lot clearer. Like I'm talking right here, and you guys can hear me fine. We also added some wireless mics, we're able to tip them on our side, and we can walk around, we can put those on, and our cordless mics. So I know today we had a little issue with the mics. I heard a little hiccups in the back, that's why I sent them back, I want to be in the audience and actually hear what's going on. So our next meeting, we shouldn't have any issues like that. One of the last things we upgraded were all the speakers in the back for the audience, so you could hear every whisper, every crack. So we could hear you guys if you guys are whispering. Just want to let you guys know that.
That can be, that can be very dangerous. Very dangerous.
Just remember the mics. So the mics on you, you guys have, there's a red and green. Red means no go, they can't hear you. Green, you're live, and it's a go. So that concludes my presentation today. If you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Yes, I do. I have, I heard that you guys did all of this on the weekends just to come in and do it gratis. That is wonderful, wonderful.
It was, it was a team effort. It was a team effort. We couldn't do it without Public Works and all staff, city council, you guys came out. If you notice, the mics over here on the right side are pointing towards the mayor, the mics on this side is on the left side. So we had, we thought about how we're going to pitch this and everything.
But all kidding aside, to be able to have in-house staff to pull this together is just amazing. And I know that Isaiah was also very instrumental in directing this too. Congratulations to you.
Yes. Thank you, guys. Any more questions?
Jason, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the action calendar. And that begins with item number six, which is the Resolution Number 2018, next in order. And it will be brought to us by Brett Wilson, Management Analyst. Brett?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. By way of a quick introduction, the procedural background for this process is, for this proposed annexation, this is the standard process that's been followed by the city of Rancho Mirage for all development within the city's jurisdiction. This is the first step in a two-step process. The second and last step will be considered by the city council at your October 4th meeting. The property information, if you'll turn your eyes to the screen, we'll have a couple, four slides up there. This is the, the territory proposed for annexation is located in the north side of Ginger Rogers Road, approximately 789 feet east of Bob Hope Drive. You can see it there. The photo on your left is sort of a larger-scale map to show you where it is. On the right, it's a little more of a detail. There's There's also a site plan that I, we got from planning to show you how this project would look out upon construction. These are some building elevations of what the project would look like. And that's it. Thank you. The, okay, the, pursuant to the Melrose Community Facilities District Act, the city back in September of 1990 established our own Community Facilities District, and since that time, we've been annexing into that district. In accordance with a condition of the preliminary development plan, the owner was conditioned to annex into the CFD. They submitted a petition for annexation, and that annexation request that the city council initiate the annexation proceedings, which is the purpose of today's meeting. The proposed annexation to the district contains approximately five acres, and it will be, if you adopt the resolution, this will be preliminarily approved with that adoption. The annexation to the district is identified as Annexation Number 175. There are nine residential lots, as you saw from the site plan. For illustration purposes only, if this project were to be built in this fiscal year, it would garner approximately $3,400 in CFD fees for the city. The resolution for this first step is attached to your staff report. Approval of this resolution would allow the city to, number one, accept the petition submitted by the owner, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map, and finally establish the date and time of the public hearing for October 4. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions from the council? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll move on to motion. Can I have a motion, please?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the city council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2018, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number 1 and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for Annexation Number 175.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. We'll now move on to item number seven, which is Resolution Number 2018, next in order. Intention to annex territory comprising of 10.08 acres to Community Facilities District Number 1. Brett, you've got this one?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon again. Again, this is a two-step process, as previously mentioned. This is step one of that process for this annexation. If you'll look at the screen, you'll see a aerial view of this project. The proposed territory is located in the north and south sides of Ginger Rogers Road, approximately 1,120 feet east of Bob Hope Drive. The territory is comprised of two parcels totaling approximately 10 acres. In accordance with the Melrose Community Facilities District Act, the city established our own CFD district in September of 1990, and we've been annexing parcels into that district ever since that time. In accordance with Condition Number 27 of the development project, the tentative track map, they were required to annex into the district. They've submitted a petition for annexation, which requests the city council initiate the annexation proceedings. The proposed annexation to the district, as the mayor mentioned, contains approximately 10 acres. It will be preliminarily approved with the adoption of the attached resolution. The annexation to the district is identified as Annexation Number 176. The site contains approximately 18 residential lots. Again, for illustration purposes only, if this project were to be built out in fiscal year 1819, it would garner approximately $6,800 in CFD fees for the city to help offset our public safety costs. The resolution for this project is attached to the, attached to the back of your staff report. Approval of this resolution would allow the city to do the following: accept the petition submitted by the owner, accept and preliminarily approve the annexation map, and finally establish the date and time of the public hearing as October 4. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Brett. Any questions from council? Comments? Anyone in the audience have a question on this item? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please, on number seven?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, and that is that the city council approve and adopt Resolution Number 2018, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number 1 and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for Annexation Number 176.
Second.
Thank you, Harris. That was excellent. Thank you, Charlie, for the second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. That is the last item on the regular agenda today. We do have a closed-session item coming up, and I'll turn the mic over to our city attorney, Steve Q.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding one potential initiation of litigation matter and also the existing litigation known as Veronica Juarez versus City of Ranch Mirage. And the council will also recess pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to confer with the labor negotiator, the city manager, regarding the Ranch Mirage Employees Association.
Thank you, Steve. We will now recess to closed session. Thank you all for coming today. Hope you enjoyed your afternoon and enjoyed the new council chambers. So with that, meeting is adjourned.